...manager walked in with this note, which was his resignation. And, in fact, seven years ago, he made a two-year commitment. It was almost like an interim. But he stayed around and stayed around, and he worked on so many boards and committees, and he's really changed the shape of this town. So it's with regret that we say goodbye. But the nice thing about it is, he's going to be here for a couple more months, at least. And he will also help us in the transition of finding the, a new manager, depending on the decision of the, of the collective council. So we will be working with him for the next couple of months, and, and maybe even longer on a, on a consulting basis, to make the transition as painless as possible. So, Chris, with that, thank you very much for your service. I wish there were a larger audience there to say, "Thank you."
Well, we'll, we'll have a couple more meetings. We'll have a couple more meetings together, and I'm sure I'll have some parting words to say to everybody when the time comes.
Okay.
I just wanted to, you know, let everybody know, and my staff, and in the community, that we're, that we're beginning this transition process, and it'll be an orderly process. And I hope to leave everything in better shape than, than when I found it.
I just want to remind everybody, when Chuck Place retired, we had a, a party with Steep Canyon Rangers here. Do you remember that?
No.
Get to work on it.
Steep Canyon Rangers?
Yeah.
They became famous within six months after that.
A lot of bluegrass fans?
Sure.
We're gonna get... Yes, and Steve Martin is associated with them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we have the, the option of refusing to accept a resignation?
I tried that.
Oh.
It didn't work. Even Dr. Cox was helping me, but he, he was in the office when...
Well, no wonder you lost that.
Oh, man. No matter what happens, you can't win. Anyway, thanks again for your service, Chris, and it'll be, it'll be another couple of months, and we'll have a proper goodbye at that time.
Thank you.
And with that, would I like to have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion on it? Any needed changes? No alterations? All in favor, say aye.
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 Sounds unanimous? Okay. We move to staff reports. Chris?
All right. Well, in the month of January, I think most of our excitement was around the storm that we had. And that's really where most of the focus of our public safety, and our public works, and our team was. It was about a three-day event for our team, and we had a number of folks that were working 24-hour shifts. We recorded anywhere from eight inches to 14 inches of snow in certain places around town. And I just can't say enough about how well our team responded. We've done this now for a number of years, and have really got a process down well. They got out, really, the Thursday night that the snow started, and had a good head start on a lot of roads. We, fortunately, due to the timing of when it was in the year, didn't have a lot of people on the road, which was good. We had a couple of accidents in town that were mostly visitors, for some reason, passing through the area, trying, trying to get home. But for the most part, everybody was safe, and we had limited power outages, and we were able to get emergency crews around where necessary. So, all in all, it was good. We did an after-action review, and identified things that worked well, a couple of other things that didn't, that we want to adapt, and evolve our processes a little bit for the next big event, which hopefully is not going to be this season, will be next season, but you never know. We've still got a couple of good weeks ahead of us. The police, in addition to handling all of that, at this time of year, they've started to increase their patrol up on Boys Camp Road, as the complaints have started to come in more and more, due to the state park's parking lot being full. We get a lot of hikers and climbers in the off-season, fall, winter, and spring. And all that overflow is parking on Boys Camp Road. And so, the state park is beginning to warn and ticket more often, and our officers are doing the same. Valerie is working with our sign designer, and we're, we've got a, we've got a couple of signs in the works at the base of, or at the start of Boys Camp Road, alerting people to, we've got plenty of parking here in Town Hall by our welcome center if they'll carpool on up. And then we've got some additional parking signs that we're developing, that is both welcoming to our guests, but also letting them know that there's no parking on the roadside anywhere along that road. So as soon as we get those approved, and printed, and installed, that should help, particularly as the warmer weekends of spring come upon us. In addition to all the snow, after that, we had quite a bit of rain, as everybody can tell from all the runoff in the river and, and the lake. Due to the combination of both of those, Donnie has been working nonstop down at the hydro plant. And in January, we received a check from Duke Energy for $124,800, which is our highest revenue check in history. And then his last couple of months have been a couple of the highest in history. So he's just knocking it out this year, keeping that plant going. And at the same time, he's got some electrical repair happening up on top, the three different motors that open the floodgates. He's repairing and replacing the controls to those, to those motors in and on around all of this storm. So if you see Donnie, express our, our thanks and our appreciation for all of his hard work. Dale at the golf course is doing off-season repairs to greens and fairways and a number of things. And, and in between, we've had some good weather, and he had 142 rounds of golf and 10 rounds of foot golf in January. He and his wife Kathy are going to the PGA show, where they annually kind of restock with, with goods for the, for the pro shop. Couple of updates on projects that we've got active. The strip center, the four-unit strip center, we have completed and closed on the purchase of that, and are now moving forward with renovations. We'll talk a little later tonight about a, a budget ordinance for that project. Dredging, mobilization has begun. As of yesterday and today, we've got equipment arriving on site, and over the next couple of weeks, they'll start to build piping and float their hydraulic dredge out in the back of the river channel, and focus their dredging on the, on the choke point as you exit the river channel and the Marina Bay into the main lake, and get as much dredging done as they can before it gets to be spring. And, and for a couple of reasons, we have to back off on that activity. But we're excited about that. That's the start of a 10-year relationship with this vendor, where they're going to have kind of a permanent presence on-site. And lastly, we've been working since about, oh, September, on going and updating the to-do list, the implementation plan in our comprehensive plan from 2007. And we've had a number of workshops that people have participated in. We've had surveys that sent out to the community, all asking for input on what are your priorities today, what are the issues that are most important, and what should we be focused on for the next five to eight years, within the context of the 20-year comprehensive plan that is still very much relevant. And we're on the, we're on the last step of that. We've gotten all of that feedback, and now it's being consolidated and combined into a new implementation plan that should be ready to come back for, for review and approval by the town council in late March. And that's all for my report tonight.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Steve?
You want to do that now? Because now, next is the public hearing on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Reports come before.
We usually do the, yeah, we usually do the... Where is it at?
They got us down as number eight tonight.
They do.
So...
Is that just a...
And the agenda's been approved, so...
Why don't we continue on with the reports, and then we'll go to the, go to the issue, okay? Because I think we usually do those before.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, sure.
I didn't see that.
I attended the zoning and planning board this month, in place of John, who was out of town. The main, main item on that agenda was the discussion on non-conforming lots of record amendment, which will be the subject of the public hearing and the ordinance proposal tonight. So I'll cover that more in detail then. The zoning and planning board did reelect officers. Tom McKay was reelected as chair, and Charlie Ellis as vice-chair. They also called for an update on the comp plan process, which Shannon provided to all of us today, or by email, and the role of the zoning and planning in that process. So they have received that. For the Board of Adjustment and the Lake Structure Appeals Board, the Board of Adjustment had one RVR case, which was approved. They also had the appeal case that was posed by opponents of the Lodge on Lake Lure project, where they were appealing a zoning administrator decision regarding the off-site parking. The board determined that the zoning administrator never actually made such a decision, and ultimately dismissed the case as not having jurisdiction to hear, saying that it was a town council decision regarding that parking, and therefore, the Board of Adjustment could not hear an appeal of a town council decision. So it's now back in the attorney's hands. John Kilby was elected the new chairman, and David Butts was elected the vice-chair. And when I got elected to town council, the, the decision was basically made that I would remain on the Board of Adjustment for another year for transition. I don't think that's necessary, after observing the Board of Adjustment and their performance at that February meeting. So therefore, tonight, I'm going to announce my resignation from the Board of Adjustment effective March 1st. I will attend the February meeting, and then they'll give the council and the town time to gather names, and we can appoint a replacement at the March council meeting. There's no need for me to remain on the board, even though I will still be there as the liaison. The Lake Structure Appeals Board had no cases. They did hold their annual elections, and John Kilby was elected chair for the Lake Structure Appeals Board, and David Butts was elected vice-chair. The upcoming Lake Structure Appeals Board and Board of Adjustment will be held on Wednesday, February the 24th, not normal, as normal on Tuesday. So it'll be Wednesday at 1:00 here for BOA, 1:30 for the Lake Structure Appeals Board, and they will be hearing a variance case on the Okane Boathouse, which is on Lakeview Road, which is the one I asked for updates last month, that is falling down into the lake. So those folks are now coming forth with plans, and will be presenting a variance request to the board this month. Parks and Recreation, the Thursday meeting was postponed due to a lack of quorum. We ended up having a special meeting that was announced in time and held yesterday. The board is working on a policy for naming parks and trails, et cetera, and they hope to have a draft to us at the council for the March, March meeting. They are also working on their geese mitigation plans for the budgeting process. And Kathy Minnick is trying to set up a foot golf competition for ladies, where they can have teams or individuals compete, and, and promoting foot golf for the exercise benefit, such as a chimney rock team of ladies against a Lake Lure team of ladies, and whatever groups you can think of. So if anyone's interested in that, contact Kathy Minnick at the golf course for further details. There is a new one-half-mile trail at Donald Ross Park that goes up to the ridge by the church. It's a very nice trail that Ed Ditmer and Dana and some other folks went out and carved out here in the past week or two. So that's a new trip. Regarding the parking on Boys Camp Road that Chris mentioned, the, and they brought this out at the Parks and Rec meeting yesterday, on your North Carolina primaries, there is an NC Connect option on your voting, or on your ballot, that would give $2 billion in bonds, and the park is eligible for quite, quite a bit of that, and their plan is to build a 90-space parking area at that park facility off of Boys Camp Road, which would still be in the state park property, and it would help alleviate a lot of that problem. So please vote for that. And that's all I have for Parks and Rec.
Okay. John, you okay, Rick?
Yeah, he did fine.
Okay.
Okay, the ABC Board is continuing to work through their accounting software changes. So I don't have a full financial report. We'll get it next week. But sales were up in January, 5% over what they were this time last year. And I would just like to mention that, and, and request your thoughts and prayers for one of the staff at the ABC store, Jim Cook, wishing him a speedy recovery from lung cancer as he receives chemo and radiation, and is continuing to work and serve the public there at the store. The Lake Advisory Board, in its regular meeting, discussed boats that potentially produce large wake. This has been something that was discussed in previous meetings and continued without any recommendation at this time. It was the consensus to continue to educate boaters, and to mention the idea to boats and boaters that wake boats and potentially surfing may be banned if the problem persists. This has to do with heavy boats that are capable of adding weight to make the wake larger, which is damaging to the shoreline, as well as dangerous to some other boats on the lake. Dean and Mark will begin a communication campaign to hopefully encourage folks to be respectful. There, there are a number of issues related to that, that will be monitored. There was discussion of future concession agreement, contracts, with Lake Lure Tours concerning the wake and speed of the tour boats. The board members suggested that Lake Lure Tours may want to consider making the tour time longer, as many residents would like for the boats to reduce their wake, or go to a no-wake, not necessarily idle speed, but to reduce the wake, particularly when they're stopping and starting. So we're expecting a proposal from the Lake Lure Tours folks as to how they can accomplish that. Discussion of the proposed debris boom to be placed in the river continued. This is a discussion of a boom to catch debris coming from the river. They're not ready to make a recommendation yet, but they explained that it will only, if they do go to the boom, which is a very expensive operation, it would be across the water only when there's an expected event. So it would not interfere with boat traffic in the river, and that will continue to be Regarding lake structures, Gary Johnson presented a hard copy of potential amendments, and asked the board members to review the document prior to the next meeting. Regarding dredging and watershed stabilization, Lake Operations Director Dean Given stated that the mining permit, which has been holding up the dredging for months, has been received, and a 10-year contract for dredging has been signed. Clint Calhoun discussed concerns about dredging during spawning season, and so we'll have to work with the state regarding when we and where we can dredge legally. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Last Tuesday at 3:00 PM, we held our first utility board meeting. We now have seven members on that board, and this board was established so that questions like water sewer rates, we have our future greenway line that we need to work out, the design and engineering on, as well as costs and how to pay for it. And I'm looking forward to this board as being liaison there, because we have a lot of utility issues that need to be answered, and I don't feel that just four people, I don't think the council feels that four people should be making the entire decision. We encourage everyone in this audience and everyone out there to please come and attend this utility board meeting, with any questions regarding utility rates, any recommendations, our greenway project, or any concerns you may have with utilities. We started the meeting, Chris did a great job giving us the outline of future topics and what the responsibilities are going to be for this board, and then also what we're going to be addressing as far as our future sewer pipeline. Unfortunately, you're going to be looking at sewer rates. We've got an issue with our, our bonds, where our rates are not a high enough standard because the medium income for Lake Lure is too high. It throws you out of about half of the bonds that are available. However, if you increase your rates, then you qualify for bonds that have a much lower interest rate. Looking at the project, first estimates will be anywhere from 11 to 13, 14 million dollars. When you run that number out, you're looking at a $2.5 million in savings and interest and payments, if you go up on that rate. So that's a tough decision for anyone and any group of people to balance, and that's why this board, and one of the reasons the board's created, is we need input from citizens and board members, and anyone that knows of any bonding or financial help that we could get, to help us get these bonds and get these sewer improvements that we need at the lowest cost possible to our whole community. So that'll be held on the first Tuesday of each month, and we appreciate any consideration or any help that you could help us with. Right now, currently, we had looked at either building a new sewer plant, or extending the pipeline to Rutherford Ten or to Spindale. We looked at those costs, or roughly about a million dollars difference between just building our own plant or piping it to Spindale. We asked Rutherford Ten to also give us a price on the cost of processing, and they obviously weren't interested. They were about five times what Spindale was for their rate. So right now, the target is for Spindale, and this is a, a problem that we've all had with Lake Lure as far as our processing of sewer. As you know, we, we fight every summer to meet all the qualifications needed for the state on our discharge permits, and so therefore, this is a first topic that was a priority for the utility board. So please come and attend, and we appreciate everybody willing to serve on that board.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. And that concludes that. Moving back to item number six, the public hearing on the proposed ordinance number 16-2-9, an ordinance concerning amendments to the town of Lake Lure zoning regulations regarding non-conforming lots of record. Nobody signed up to speak. If anybody would like to come speak, they're more than welcome. Okay, seeing no hands, why don't we move to item number seven, and consider the adoption of ordinance... Do you want to... We'll just go into the consideration, and then you can talk to it, okay?
Sure.
Number seven, consider adoption of ordinance number 16-2-9, an ordinance concerning amendments to the town of Lake Lure zoning regulations regarding non-conforming lots of record. Steve was our local resident guy on ordinances, so...
Well, I proposed to change back in September on this issue. Currently, our regulation requires one to come in and get a variance for a non-conforming lot of record, even if he can met, meet all setback requirements. And, and that just doesn't make sense. So I'm looking to change that, and, and we did this proposal. The town's intent has always been for non-conforming lots of record to be able to be used for the use designated, and, and any lot, as with any other lot, if you need a setback variance, then yes, you have to come get a variance. But if you can meet the setbacks, then you did not need a variance. And, and we should not treat these lots any differently. So we proposed, or I proposed, these changes in, in working with Shannon and Sheila very closely. Mike Egan looked at these back in October. We appeared before the zoning and planning board then, and the zoning and planning board at that time felt it was a good ordinance, and so did Mike Egan. Due to other events, all of this got delayed, and, and so after the Lodge on Lake Lure ended, I asked for this to come up again. The zoning and planning board heard it this month. They unanimously voted to recommend approval of it, and, and that's why we're here tonight, is to try to pass this ordinance. You have Sheila's memo in your, in your packet, and also the zoning and planning board, as you note in Sheila's memo, found or recommended approval based on it being neither consistent nor inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. That was based on the info they had before them at the time. Sheila, in her memo, points out that she has found a couple of sections of the plan that it is consistent with, and has recommended in a motion regarding, concerning that, so...
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
I do have some questions. Previously, it stated that these lots, which are undersized lots, but not more than 20%, and that has all been stricken. So is there any... I, I see no minimum with the removal of that 20% as to how small that might be. And I know in the past, there has been, from, from the time that we had to deal with these lots of records, an intent, whenever possible, to combine smaller lots to make a conforming lot. And I'm wondering to what extent this would discourage that.
Okay. The requirement to recombine, or, or to combine contiguous property is still there. That's in paragraph 92, 130, a separate section of the regulation. That's always been there and will be. So you still have that requirement. What happens when you do recombine? You have contiguous property you own, you do combine, and you still have a non-conforming lot of record. All right? Right now, this 20% versus the 80% threshold is, is based on lot area, more so than anything. And lot area should not be a consideration, because if you can meet setbacks, whether you have property that you did combine or not, for example, you may own a one-acre non-conforming lot of record right now, and you could easily build a nice structure that meets setbacks on one acre. But with this regulation, the way it is right now, you would have to come get a variance, because that one acre does not meet lot requirements in a neighborhood that requires two acres.
Well, why would we not change the size of the lot in, required in the neighborhood?
That's zoning. That's changing the zoning.
Correct. So that's why I feel it's inconsistent, since zoning was set up, and, and yet we know that, for example, the area up Washburn Road...
Okay.
I believe they require two acres.
Correct.
And yet, that was subdivided long ago, and most of those lots are probably less than an acre.
Very much, right. And you, you're correct.
And so that generates a lot of... And so that generates a lot of need for variances. I understand that.
Correct.
And it was discussed years ago. If the neighborhood is going to require constant exceptions, why doesn't that get rezoned to accommodate what's there? And that was never done.
Well, but we can accomplish that same goal by this simple change to where so many variances are not necessary. If you can build within the setbacks, then you don't need a variance.
And you don't need to combine multiple lots.
No, the requirement to combine is still there. If you have it, you must combine it. That requirement is still in effect and is not touched by this change. Again, that's a separate paragraph. That requirement is still there.
But if you can do it without a variance, why would you?
If you read the proposed, it says, "Any such non-conforming lot may be used for any of the uses permitted in the district in which it is located, provided the owner of the subject lot does not own sufficient contiguous land." If he doesn't own it, you can't combine it. "To enable conformity to the minimum area or lot with requirements through recombination." So if you have it to combine, you must recombine to the maximum extent possible. That doesn't change.
And if the next door lot's for sale and you can buy it?
Then you buy it, if you want. If you want, but you can't mandate somebody buy it.
I just have concerns that if...
And again, we're talking, I'm sorry, we're talking lots of record. And they do have to, they do have to still obtain this, the attorney certificate title proving and showing that it was a lot of record and platted as such prior to the regulations, you know, being put in place. Which, all of that requirement is still, it has been there and is still there. What we're taking out is that twenty percent and eighty percent breaker or threshold for lot area. Because lot area really doesn't come into play. And when you have a lot of variances on non-conforming lots of record, you always have the potential of a denial which then becomes taking.
Well, it used to come into...
And that's certainly, that's certainly not the town's intent, the way I read it.
It used to come into play if the non-conformity was more than twenty percent of the required size.
Which, what comes into play?
The twenty-eighty.
Right.
That's been taken away.
Right. That's what we're trying to eliminate, is that twenty-eighty threshold breaker. That really makes no sense because it deals with lot area.
Do you see any issues that would, this would might result in? Other than it's a change, I couldn't find it. I was looking.
I don't know what size lots are out there and what somebody will come up with, but there, somebody will.
Can you conceive, Steve, of anything that might arise that would cause us to rethink this?
No, because, you know, we've hashed this out. My memo dated October the seventh was the result of a meeting with Sheila and Shannon. And we sat in there and did some real, you know, brainstorming and beating it against the wall and throwing all the possibilities out that we could come up with. And again, and I was in shock, Mike Egan said for the first time ever, "This is a good ordinance," you know, to me, without changing it further. So that was the first thing with Mike, so.
Well, I can just think of some lakefront lots that are old lots and slivers of lots. I don't know what they come out, but I guess we'll see.
Right. Now, if it's something like the Wagner Lot that we had a case on back, what, a few months He had a negative building envelope. Those lots will still have to get variance. If you need a setback, if you cannot meet the setback, you will still have to get a variance. That's still a...
Because we have lots of lots that have no envelope at all.
The key in this is just because of lot area, you will not have to get a variance. If you can build a legal structure within the setback...
And meet the setbacks.
Then you should be allowed to do it. And that's been the intent of the town all along in the way the regulations actually read. There is a minimum area there regardless, it's determined by setbacks. Right, right. But when I say lot area, they're talking total lot area, including the setbacks. But if you cannot meet those setbacks, you still have to get a variance. That isn't changing.
Okay.
Okay, then could I have a motion? I think there's one written in here. Steve, you want to go ahead and read through that?
Sure, yeah. And before I make this motion, I want to give a lot of the credit to this coming out, to Sheila and Shannon, and bringing it to my attention as they felt it was needed. And I pursued it and researched it. So, "I move town council adopt ordinance number sixteen dash oh-two dash oh-nine and find it to be consistent with the two thousand seven, two thousand twenty-seven comprehensive plan in that it will, one, increase staff effectiveness and efficiency in keeping with GA Goal One, improved government operations of the two thousand seven, two thousand twenty-seven comprehensive plan by reducing variance requests, decreasing staff workload, and ensuring regulations are enforced appropriately. And, two, increase desirable growth in keeping with GA Goal Two, fiscally sound budget of the two thousand seven, two thousand twenty-seven comprehensive plan by encouraging investment and increasing the town tax base."
I'll second it.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and we'll move on to the next point on our agenda. Public forum, the public's invited to speak. And I have Fran Murray here again. She brought a beautiful heart-shaped cake for us. She's always trying to bribe us.
No bribing. I just came to thank you all for all the hard work you did on the roads during the storm. I wasn't out for four days, but when we were able to get out, the roads were perfect. I mean, we got down the road like nothing. So that's all I have, nothing else. We just want to thank you for all your hard work.
Very good. Thanks, Fran. And I've heard that sentiment across the town. We were surprised our road was done, and every time we got out and something was in a shadow, there was salt or sand, the guys worked all weekend long. It was tremendous, really, tremendous response. So thank you, Public Works, not here, but. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Just one item, it's the approval of our minutes for the December twenty-second meeting. I've looked through them. Do we hear a motion in that regard?
Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve it, but I have one change on the January fourth of minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's both minutes?
I'm sorry, on the December twenty-second minutes.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, why don't you talk about it, Steve?
Okay, it was on page eighteen. It's just a one-word error. Andy's done a great job on these minutes. Item C, second sentence where it says, "No gas cells," S-E-L-L, as it should be, sales.
Okay. All right. Glad we covered that one.
We left that yet to...
We don't want to let our effectiveness down.
This is your record, it should be accurate.
I'm sorry, we had to bring that up.
You caught the schoolteacher asleep at the school.
As low as this, we need to harry that word.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Steve with the modification and seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. I don't think there's any unfinished business. Okay, item number twelve, new business, a presentation from Rick Lanier, probably not saying that right, concerning the U.S. Motto Information. I forgot to leave about that. Rick, please go forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, come before you with this great call. This is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties that are voting yes to proudly and prominently display our national motto, "In God We Trust," in and on their governmental buildings. My name is Rick Lanier, and I'm co-founder and vice-chair. And it's good to have our chair with us tonight, David White, with me of the U.S. Motto Action Committee. I served as Davidson County Commissioner from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand two. In two thousand two, I led my board of commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the exterior of the governmental center. Soon after that, several other surrounding cities and counties joined us in doing the same. We formed the U.S. Motto Action Committee for the sole purpose to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" in and on their governmental buildings. Displaying the motto gives ceremonial honor to public occasions and expresses confidence in our society. These words have been used on our U.S. currency since eighteen sixty-four. This inspiring slogan is engraved above the speaker's seat, House of Representatives, above the south entrance of the Senate Chamber, several other monuments across Washington, D.C. And on July thirtieth, nineteen fifty-six, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the U.S. Congress decided to adopt "In God We Trust" as our official national motto of the United States of America. A lot of rich history goes back, even as far back as the War of eighteen twelve, when Francis Scott Key went out to rescue Dr. Beans on a British warship. Many of you probably remember. And I just want to tell you just a little quick story there some of you may not be aware of, some of you may. When he went out there, he went out to try to save Dr. Beans that was, had been arrested as a spy. Dr. Beans was not a spy, and he took letters by the then-President James Madison to let him know that not only was he not a spy, but he had treated British soldiers with the same care that he had American soldiers. And the night that they were supposed to, or planning for the next day to wage war against Fort McHenry, the only thing, which was the only thing that stood between them and the shores of Baltimore, they had already won a battle and burned the president's mansion, which later was painted after being burned, which now is why it's called the White House. So what happened then, they told Francis Scott Key, Attorney Francis Scott Key, with the letters that he had from British soldiers and from the president, that they would release them, but not until the battle was over. It started at seven AM on September the thirteenth. And as they began, you're going to love this, as they began shooting those rockets, cannonballs, two hundred pound, packed with two hundred pound of gunpowder in each one, as they shot them, they, the fuses were designed to explode when it hit target. But because of the heavy rains, and this is all part of God's providence, and they knew that if that flag came down, that flag that was sewn together in about thirty days by Mary Pickerskill and her daughter, thirty feet wide, or thirty feet this way by forty-two feet long, if it came down from Fort McHenry, they knew that they could pass on to the Baltimore shore. But those rockets, because of the heavy rain through God's providence, some of them defused, some of them exploded early, causing the rockets red glare. Bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that the flag was still there. And Francis Scott Key, being a poet that he was, went on to add the phrase, "O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave." And he added a second verse, "Though cocker we must..." I'm losing my train of thought. Though cocker we must, but it goes on to say, "In God is our trust." That was the beginning source of "In God We Trust." And it went on through the years, in the Civil War days in eighteen sixty-four, on up to the nineteen fifties, when Matthew Rotherick wrote to Dwight D. Eisenhower and realized it wasn't on our paper money. Always in times of war, war and peace, our country, excuse me, just mauler? Our country has historically turned back to God. I think we're in a, I think we're in a battle this day. You say, "We're in war now?" Yes, we're in a war of cultures. We're in a war that if we do not take our religious freedoms seriously, I think that we're going to lose them. That's the reason it is so important for counties and cities and town halls to adopt a resolution to display our national motto. And I think that's why so many town halls and city halls and county governments across the state, forty-two counties and twenty-six town halls, you all with Mark Twenty-Seven, have voted to display our national motto, and most of those, about sixty of those, over the past thirteen months, I might add. I think that's why so many are embracing it because of the times we're in. Displaying the national motto is a legal right protected by our First Amendment. On November the first, two thousand eleven, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, three hundred ninety-six to nine, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our nation's motto. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored the resolution in part because some have mistakenly stated that e pluribus unum is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages that the motto be placed in and on all government buildings and in school classrooms. A recent survey shows that eighty-seven percent of all Americans still support the display of our national motto, and rightly so. This is our country's identity. Just as my last name's Lanier, Mayor Keith, you're proud of your name, I'm proud of my name. This is who we are, this is our identity as a country. I think this is what's made our country strong through the years. We've been looked on and recognized as a God-fearing country. In times of both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength to many generations of Americans. As a grassroots patriotic movement, the U.S. Motto Action Committee, I'm proud to say stands on solid legal ground. The battle's already been won. Since Davidson County paved the way, not one legal challenge has been raised against any city or county that has voted yes. And I might add, this includes, and I'm not going to read them all tonight, as I told you earlier, forty-two counties and twenty-six town halls and growing. And now, as of September, starting back in September, we began getting requests by sheriff departments and police departments across the state to display our national motto on their bumpers. And every surrounding county here has, we have sent out decals to, about forty-five of them to McDowell County, fifty of them to Rutherford County, thirty of... of them to McDowell County, fifty of them to Rutherford County, thirty of them to Polk County, I understand Henderson County is getting those. We've been approved and already got the letters up on the building in Rutherford County, fixing to go up, ordered this week the letters for Polk and Henderson County, and the letters went up a few months ago over in McDowell County. But we have these available. In fact, I have enough tonight, if you also approve and decide, that I could leave them for your police department as well. This effort is totally legal, there's nothing to challenge. Hundred percent of the cost comes from private donations, and in most cases, from your local citizens. And how often do you get things offered to you as elected officials? And, and as, as old country fellow says, "I are one," or "I used to be one," free of charge. This, this costs nothing out of tax dollars, and we purposely do it that way, so that no naysayer, and, and usually the naysayers are going to be small in number, but you know they always cry the loudest. But, but you were talking about zoning issues earlier. That was the part of being a county commissioner that I hated the worst, is zoning meetings, because if you had two opposing parties, someone was going to walk away unhappy. But, you know, that's just part of the job, unfortunately.
Rick, I think you, I think you've pretty much made your case, it was, has anybody got any questions for him? I, I looked through the material and-
I'll look through it, I'd just like to, you know, just like to commend you and your organization, the U.S. Motto Action Committee, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, very honorable undertaking, we appreciate what you're doing. I'm almost embarrassed that we don't have it up already. I think that, that it's, I'm, I'm delighted that it's this council that can vote to, to approve this, and we appreciate your efforts. I hope that our police department will use them as well. So, I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept the offer from the U.S. Motto Action Committee to display the national motto here in this building and on the front of the building, and on the police cars as well, if that's what the Chief wants. I will proudly second that.
Motion made and seconded, do we already, any discussion, any questions?
I'll proudly say all these thirds on that one.
Will you adopt that resolution?
Pardon?
Will you make a motion to adopt that resolution?
Yeah, the resolution, it's in the booklet, yes.
Right. Yeah, that's what I said, adopt the resolution.
I, I heard it.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made, it's been seconded and third. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you all so much, and I don't know if, I have, I have never met him, so I don't know if Pastor Ruze was able to make it tonight, but Pastor Anton Ruze was very instrumental in helping me facilitate this through Commissioner Moore, and he is very excited about this, and I think that he will pretty much lead the charge and help in making this a possibility. So, so hopefully, it won't be long in, in, in the coming to fruition.
Very good.
Thank you all very much, and, and I'll, I'll leave a couple sample decals, both black and white, because I think they have both with your office here tonight, and then they can just let us know how many more they like. Thank you all so much.
Very good, thank you. Okay, item number twelve B, consider adoption of Resolution Number Sixteen dash two dash nine, changing the number of board members on the utility board by adding a provision for attendance. Bobby, just want to just-
What it was is originally, we had set up the board to have five members, but after looking at the applicants and the importance of this board, we felt the more input, the better, so we're, the resolution will go up to seven members of the board with varying years of service, and we felt that change was needed to get even more input from our community and board members.
Very good. Any, any questions or comments?
I have one, I've heard reference to it as the utility board and also the utility advisory board. So what is the official name that we're calling it? And, and that's what should be in this resolution.
Good point. I would, I would recommend Utility Advisory Board.
Yeah, I think that's what we had talked about before.
Okay with that, Chris?
Yeah, I've heard both references, so.
Okay, that's, so, do we hear a motion that we adopt this resolution and call it the Utility Advisory Board?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Mary Ann. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that the more people we ha-, we have such a wealth of professional and people who are willing to give their time to serve on these boards, and I think the more input we have from our, our citizens, the more effective and, and productive those boards can be, so I think this is a good move.
Having attended the meeting, experience on this board, and the distribution around the town, and the contractors, people with sewer and, and that, the background, financial people, it's terrific. Once, a couple are here tonight in the back row, John and Fran, so thank you for your service. Okay, moving on. Consider adoption of Capital Project Ordinance Number Sixteen oh-two nine A. Chris, you want to-
Yes.
Just address this one.
And the utility board? Was there a vote?
There was a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
All right, you have a Capital Project Ordinance in front of you for the renovation of the strip center and the preparation of, the build-out for it to house the ABC Board. When we have large projects, we create a Capital Project Ordinance and Budget in separate fund that sort of takes it out of the regular budget and allows us to manage that project toward that budget, and allows it to span multiple budget years if necessary. We're trying to get this project done within this fiscal year, but we're, we don't necessarily have to do that, because it will have its own capital budgets. So you see, basically, the estimates that we've presented to the board before, purchase price, we've already invested that amount, and then the remainder is improvements to building and property, design, engineering permits, legal costs, and some contingency, totaling up to five hundred thousand dollars. And, and as was presented before, our plan is ultimately, after renovation, to attract a buyer, as well as renters for the other units, and recover all of those funds, and, and have the building be a productive, tax-paying property in town.
Any, any questions or comments?
No, I just think this is a great project, great example of us being able to spur the economy as well as we can, and then also listening to our asset management board with their recommendations to move the ABC Board there, which frees up another building that hopefully will get long-term tenure or someone to buy. And we encourage, if you know anyone out there, we'd like for someone to come along and purchase this building that we're financing right now, and be a great investment, investment for somebody.
So do we have a motion to Capital Project for, or you-
One, one question, of course, under Section Three, the things didn't line up, so the last two items, just for clarification, which is which and the money amount, Chris?
The other legal and fiscal cost is twenty-four thousand four hundred, and then the contingency is the remaining fifty-one hundred.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, now we just rounded it up to five hundred thousand, because the contingency is like one hundred and thirty second, or whatever it is, but that's okay.
I got that. I just want to know which item was which.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve this ordinance, the Capital Project Ordinance for the ABC store removal.
I'll make the motion that we accept the ordinance number sixteen dash two dash zero nine eight.
Do we hear a second?
A second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Stephen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, one more item on here. Do we go into closed session? Okay, item number, item number twelve D is to close session in accordance with GS one forty-three dash thirteen, three eighteen dot eleven A six, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. And this will be really the search for a new town manager, and we're just discussing that in closed session. I guess we need a motion to go on to closed session?
Yes.
I'll make a motion and we go into closed session.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve.
Wait a minute.
Mary Ann.
I'm not sure you can go into closed session to discuss the idea of a new town manager. Now, once you get names, you can go into closed session easily, discuss the candidates and their qualifications, but I don't think you go into closed session just to discuss the concept or how to go about picking a future one.
Well, I mean, it, it-
If it has to do with you, yes, they can go into closed session.
It, it does, and it has to do with, with my involvement in the transition, my final date here, whether I continue on in kind of a consulting arrangement, so, so we wanted just an, an opportunity to freely discuss those options.
Well, then, yes, but as, as long as the focus is on you-
It's, it's a lot of-
And your, your role in it as a, you know, town staff person, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, just a lot of loose ends regarding this resignation about him. Yeah, very good, okay.
That's right.
Okay. All right, we have the motion and a second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Got it.
Ooh, okay.
Thank you.
We might.
Thank you.